Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call this informational meeting to order of December 1st, 2020. Welcome to those here in the audience and those watching online or on television. First, before we get started, we like to identify the council members that we have. Oh, so I'm just going to ask for you by name, and if you're there, just let me know you're here. First, Councilor Brecky.
Here.
Councilor Kylie.
Here.
Councilor Selberg. And Councilor Sale.
Yes, Sale is here.
Thank you. So with the remote attendance, it sounds like we have seven of eight right now. Next, we're going to move on to committee and commission reports. The one item is the Audit Committee of November 16th, 2020, and I wonder if Councilor Kylie, the chair of that committee, would be ready to make that report.
Yes, I'm prepared to give that report. The committee met November 16th to receive an update on Ida Bailey's external audit of the city's 2020 financial statements, the bid tax audit, and a follow-up to the landfill licensing audit. I'll give you just a brief summary of each of those. Ida Bailey has been working on the audits since last month and expects to issue the final audit by the end of March. They have adjusted their approach a bit this year, as you can imagine, due to COVID. So insofar as there will be more reliance on remote communication as the audit progresses. So one final note, there are not any new professional auditing standards that have been implemented this year, but some are expected to be implemented in the coming years. Okay, the bid tax audit was presented as well. There were a few key findings there, four to be exact. The first one, Chapter 37, the City of Sioux Falls Code of Ordinance should be reviewed and updated. Finding two, compliance with ordinance 37.196 statement required along with occupational tax payment is not being enforced. Finding number three, based on testing of hotel bid tax payments, it was determined that the bid occupational state or the bid occupational tax worksheet is filled out inconsistently by hotels. This is not by city code of ordinances, but it is a requirement by city finance. And finding number four then, in reviewing the City of Sioux Falls Finance Department's policies and procedures established in February 2020, they found the policy and procedure documentation could be strengthened. The report provided recommendations to address each of those findings. And then lastly, the committee received a follow-up landfill licensing audit. One of the key items addressed was updating the hauler license application. The report which now the report showed that significant steps have been taken to improve the licensing process, and it now includes the ability to apply and pay electronically. There's no date set for the next meeting yet, but we'll have that posted as soon as available, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions related to that report? Hearing none. Moving on to the next item, council remarks. Any council remarks today? And for the benefit of those on the phone, Councilor Selberg has joined us, so everyone is here. Not hearing any council remarks. We're going to move on to presentations. The first is Item A, the SAM On Demand Transit, and that's going to be presented by Sam Trebelcock, Senior Planner, and I also see Shawna Goldammer.
Good afternoon.
Urban Planner, correct?
Planning Projects Coordinator.
Planning Projects Coordinator. Very good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sam Trebelcock, City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development Office. And as Councilor Neisser was indicating, also with me today is Shawna Goldammer. The two of us, along with Suri Metro staff, are involved with implementing the SAM On Demand project, pilot project, which you've heard quite a bit about over the past couple of years. But we think we have some exciting news for you, updates about what's going on with that. And so we're going to kind of take you through where we're at and where we're headed, and then also a little bit more about Suri SAM On Demand, the pilot project, and what it's all about. So what is it? How can I ride? When will it start? All those kind of different things. First of all, again, what is SAM On Demand? SAM On Demand Transit Service will pick you up and drop you off between any SAM bus stop. In the Saturday service area that we have right now, we're doing it during Saturdays. And it'll be transfer-free. That's the real kind of key of this, is that you won't have to transfer anymore. You go from bus stop to the bus stop you want to get off at, and you won't have to transfer at the Southwest Transfer Station or the Depot unless that's where you're going. So you simply request your origin and destination, the amount of people you're riding with, and the time your desired pickup and drop-off is. And Shawna's going to talk about kind of that rider experience in a few minutes and how that's going to work. But it is on-demand. It is going to be different. So there's certainly an educational process. There's some marketing that we're going to have to do so the people that are riding on Saturdays understand that difference. We'll talk about that in a second, too. So as you might remember, SAM On Demand was an innovation pilot project that came out of that Sioux Falls Transit Core Team process. So that entire Core Team process, this was the major project that kind of rose to the top. And so again, I just want to highlight that during that Core Team process, this is something that we are implementing as a part of that process. So it will run on Saturdays, and we're also looking at if it runs really pretty well on Saturdays, that we would look at as part of that pilot period that it would run on weekday evenings also. We'd get some more data, and we think that's another time that would work well for this pilot. SAM buses and drivers will still provide the service. That's important to note. And Pantonium will be the software platform. So now what is Pantonium? Pantonium really is what you're going to see, what riders will see is the app that you have. What drivers will see is the ride that they get and will be utilized. We actually have a tablet in each bus. And then with that tablet, the drivers will say, where's my next ride going to be? And it'll pop up to them, and it's automatically dispatched to them. Nobody at SAM has to do that. The software actually does that. And it does it what we hope is a very efficient way, more efficiently than we're doing things now. Now, I do have, and Shawna's going to play just a little video here that highlights a little bit more about Pantonium. So I think the important thing to note here is that what they call this to be macrotransit, it isn't a microtransit system. It's on the bigger buses. It is from stop to stop. It isn't from house to house.
We're getting close to the number of people who signed up, about halfway there. So I think we can safely get started. I know we have a lot to pack in.
So again, the macrotransit system is something that can also interface with our fixed route system, too, as I kind of talked about again in that video. So you can run some of these on lower-performing routes, and that's something that we're really trying to see as part of this project, is how well and to what degree can we operate our system on this Pantonium type of macrotransit system. So we're really interested to see how it works. So when can we ride? Our service, and we're at the point now, we can announce that service begins on December 19th, which is that Saturday. And the service will continue for four and a half months on Saturdays with the possible addition, again, of weekday evenings during that four and a half month pilot period. Staff and driver training is underway right now. What we're looking at now is on-the-road training and testing. We just kind of started to nail that down even today. It's going to be December 8th through the 17th. So drivers will actually go out and pick up some riders. We have some test riders that we're going to, will be testing out the system and helping out the drivers, and also testing out the app, seeing how it works during that time. So we're looking forward to that. In terms of education and marketing, that's going to begin as soon as tomorrow. We're at the point where we can start texting out information to people that are in our tech service. We just started a texting service. The same thing as the Snowplows have. You can text to the Suri Metro Texting Service. We'll have flyers, a website, news releases, reach out to organizations, rider outreach, you know, during those days, those Saturdays leading up to as early as this Saturday. And then also at the Depot, we'll have announcements. So again, education's going to be really key, again, that the public understands, the people that are riding understand that you need to do things a little differently now. But we think if you do it differently, it's going to be a better experience for you. Now, this is the website that we have up, will be rolling out here as early as tomorrow, the SAM On Demand webpage. It has some frequently asked questions, how you request a ride. Shawna's going to talk about that again in a second, but there's a couple, three different ways you can do it, by a rider app, online, or by phone calls. There's a couple of different options. You don't have to have a phone. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shawna.
Hi, I'm Shawna Goldammer with Planning and Development Services. And you might have saw me kind of messing with my phone because I've got really exciting things to show you on my phone and how we can book rides for Saturdays with SAM On Demand. Now, I also noticed that I have the little red bar on my battery, so fingers crossed that my battery doesn't crap out on me when I am trying to demonstrate. But it's really simple to schedule a ride, and I can kind of show you that. We have a quick little video about what the Riders app is all about. But we're not leaving people behind that don't have devices. You can also schedule a trip through the website, like through your Chrome browser or Safari. And that website is samondemand.org. So that is out there right now. You can kind of take a look at it. When people register to be a rider in the system, all you have to provide us is an email and, of course, your own password. But we are very not collecting information. We only want your information so we can email you to let you know when the bus is coming your way, kind of like a Lyft share type service is what this is. And you can also give us a call at the SAM phone number that's up there to schedule the ride if you'd like as well. So we're trying not to leave anybody behind, but what we hear from our software provider, Pantonium, is that most people are going to use the app, that you're going to find that a lot of people use their devices to book these trips. So how does the system work like for a passenger? So you schedule a trip, and I get on the bus, and I go to any location that's a stop in the Saturday service area. So you know where the SAM bus stops are. I go there. I open up my app. I request a ride. I can do it ASAP, and then it'll tell me what stop I'm at. The signs also at the stops have been numbered, so people can look at the sign and go, oh, I'm at stop number. So you can add the stops by number, by location, or picking a pin on the map. And then it's just that simple. The bus comes to you. They let you know when you're, and then it will take you to your destination, which you've also input into the app. So what's really exciting about this is that we're not going to be sending empty buses in circles anymore, right? The buses are going to pull out only when there's a trip scheduled at a stop, and they'll know where to pick them up, where they want to be dropped off. And then SAM has, we have another quick little video that kind of shows you what the app does. Of course, you have to go to the App Store, and you can do that today through your Droid or iPhone, and download the app. And it does kind of show that part, but you only have to do that once, right? I mean, once you get the app, then you can schedule rides for any Saturday that you want. But yeah, let's take a look at that video, Sam. So that's a quick overview of that app, and I am going to, I have iPhone here, so apologize for you Droid users, because I know very little about Droid technology. But I'm going to show you just really quick here, if I can flip over a thing, Sam. Okay. So here, I've got actually the app on my phone. This is hooked up to the test environment, so it's not exactly for real, but you get the idea. So what we're going to do is if, say I want a new ride, all I have to do is that. Where do I want to go? I want this ride right away. I want to go from, and you'll see here that it's got recents or stop. Every time you book a trip, it remembers where you were, so you can do recents. And I've been out there a couple of times, so let's see here. Maybe I want to go to, I'm at the Eastside Walmart, so I want to be picked up there. So I'm just going to set my location, and then where am I going to? I can't remember. Where is the Carnegie? So I'll just zoom in on the map, pick my pin. So, Tenth and Dakota, set, add ride. Your ride has been added. It's just that simple. So that pretty much covers the app. We also have some other, you know, the education piece is going to be huge, kind of like what SAM alluded to. We do have some information about what that kind of looks like, where you download, either Google Play or the App Store. And we're going to really push hard to get the message out to our existing riders, and then hopefully, once they get on board, we'll expand our reach to include new riders. But we're really excited about it. And with that, we'd be happy, between Sam and I, to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Exciting. Questions? We'll start in chambers. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. For Sam or Shawna, whoever wants to answer it. Not necessarily on the SAM On Demand, but can you talk a little bit about the drivers as far as, will the same drivers be doing the exact same routes, or is it just mixed up all the time? And why or why not for the sake of efficiencies?
Right. So we have kind of two teams of drivers, if you will. We have the paratransit drivers. And by the way, paratransit is not impacted by this. That's kind of still running its own thing separately. The fixed route drivers are the ones who will be our drivers here. The difference is, they'll still be driving the bus. They'll be still capturing those rides on tablets on the buses. The difference is that they won't follow the same fixed route. Their journey, is the term that we use, will be determined by the requested rides out there. So then it'll show up where they need to go. They'll click en route. They don't have to look at that tablet at all. They're driving to the destination. Okay, they arrive at the stop that they're supposed to. They open the door. Hi, are you Shawna? Yes. Come on aboard, you know, because you want to make sure that you're picking up the right person, right? Just kind of like a Lyft. I mean, you go, you say, hey, you know, are you my driver or whatever? So, and then they get on, and then the driver looks at his tablet, says, okay, I boarded that person. Then it shows where their next stop will be. They hit en route, then they drive.
So will we not have fixed routes on Saturdays anymore? It's only just on-demand?
Right. During the pilot. It will not be running the regular fixed route.
It just sends them from place to place. Okay, so during the week, then, do we have the same drivers driving the same fixed routes?
Yes.
Or do they rotate based on, today I feel like driving central Sioux Falls, and so I'm going to drive central Sioux Falls instead of southwest. I don't know all the route numbers.
Yeah. Okay, so it'll be the same group of drivers that provide the service, and they schedule them according to a bid and the union and all that kind of stuff. So it's the same group of drivers. The good news is that we know now which drivers are scheduled to work on the 19th and the 21st. So we're really working hard to get them trained, but eventually, all of them have the potential to drive on a Saturday.
Okay. And so then, talk a little bit about the measurables as far as what's success? What determines that this program is success? I mean, I saw your...
You could just see him, you know, glowing in the light.
Yes. I couldn't see you smiling, but I can see your eyes. So what are the measurables as far as, I know that each of those statistics that you provided, those are the goals, but how do you know that you're being successful in this? Is it rider feedback? Is it more rides? Is it the drivers are happier? I mean, efficiency comes in many different ways. It's not always just saving money, but there's a lot of different ways.
So you hit on some of them, Counselor Erickson, but certainly, I think if you kind of boil it down, what we're really looking at trying to do, and what we really want to see, is how many vehicles does it take for us to make this work on Saturdays? Right now, there's eight vehicles out there. Can we do it with less and still do the same number of riders?
Right.
If we're doing that, we really have something here. I mean, Pantonium's coming in saying, we think with the same number of rides, of trips that you're doing, we can do it with five buses. Well, let's see. Let's see if that really works. If you do, and you can do it the same number of rides, then yeah, you can do it with the same thing with evenings, maybe. Maybe you can do it the same thing with some of your lower-performing routes during the weekdays. Now, I say that because I'm not sure, we have some pretty high-performing routes during the week. That might be tough to beat, and even Pantonium will tell you, again, like we were showing on the video, this isn't an all-or-nothing thing necessarily. You do it with, and can do it with fixed routes. You could maybe, I could visualize us having four fixed routes, and maybe if this works, doing it in some of the other route areas and doing it more efficiently. Now, the other thing is, you're right, if the people really like this more because it's more convenient, maybe we get more riders then, too. That's another thing that we want to see. We, of course, want to have more riders. And if we can do it more efficiently, can we do, as we talked about at the Transit Core Team all the time, we wanted to expand service areas, expand service times. So then, that's what we're really trying to measure as we're working on this.
I have two other quick questions. Whatever the platform that you're referring to, is that who is running the app as well as the contract that we have with Sioux Falls?
Yeah, it's with Pantonium.
Okay. And is that on a pilot basis, or is that long-term? What do we have to pay for that?
So I think if I'm getting it right, it's about $35,000 for four and a half months, including all the training that we're getting.
Right.
So, and that's just for the four and a half months of pilot time that we have. You know, if you're, and that's, you know what, basically, I think we can go to 10 buses with that. If all of a sudden you did more buses, it's going to cost you more, and of course, more time, it'll cost you more. But for this period, that's about what it is, yeah.
So for me personally, $35,000 at four and a half months, do the math, times a year, you're over $100,000, whatever, $1,000. To see the return of investment, did we get a grant for any of that, or is this?
Well, to me, the return on investment is if we can do this with less buses.
Right.
We don't have to buy as many buses.
Right.
And at $450,000 a pop.
Right.
That's a big deal.
Right, exactly. And that makes sense. But that's where the ROI is really important, I think, for me personally, as we talk about the finances of it, because we know that the busing system is struggling. To keep their head afloat as federal funding changes, it's tough, and I get it. My last question is, is can you touch on the PTAB and their involvement in this process?
Yeah, so through the entire process, they've been involved, even, you know, during the Transit Core Team, they were involved. During their last meeting, we had the same discussion and had public input, and that's where the public's been able to be involved. We had a couple other public involvement sessions beyond that, too, that we had some good involvement. But PTAB's been involved through the entire process, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for our, I mean, exciting times. Thanks for all your work on this. I know it's been a long time coming. There was an awful lot of hype, and then it kind of fizzled out for a while. And so now to see it kind of coming to fruition and having a launch time certainly is exciting to have that, you know, using different technology to meet the needs of our citizens with getting from point A to point B. So, thank you.
Counselor, start.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sam, tell me a little bit, how do you pay? The rates are going to be the same as they normally would on a Saturday. Can you pay within the app?
No, not right now.
So how do they collect, or?
So right now, you pay just as you would pay to any other ride. You know, you still have to, you could pay, you know, a buck fifty right on into the fare box, or a lot of people ride, of course, with the month, the 30-day pass, and they would just show that as they get on also.
Does the app have that ability to pay on the app for an additional fees, or is that something moving forward?
Not right now. I know that's something that, you know, Pantonium would be looking at. I think there's the possibility... I think there's the possibility, as we've talked to our fare box provider, of trying to do something like that when we talked to them. Um, because one of the other things we talked about is part of the Transit Core team process is what can we do with technology beyond this? And certainly also looking at, you know, um, you know, other ticketing systems, like through your phone app, is something that our fare box provider or other, um, providers can, can do. And I think there's some of that possibility down the road.
Okay, does the app tell you, when, when Shawna went through it and requested the ride, does it give you an idea how long, kind of as a countdown to, it, it's going to be ten minutes, five minutes, twenty minutes, whatever?
What it says, uh, it says coming soon and it says like within fifteen minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of a fifteen minute, and, and we're going to know better as we do this, how long that wait is. We talked to one of the providers, um, that's been doing it for a year and a half in, in Ontario, and their time right now is nine. Their nine minute waiting time, which is really pretty good. Um, we don't know what ours is going to be, it's going to be a little dependent on, on, on the, uh, vehicles that we have out there and, and our demand with the, the number of riders we have, but, so that's really, with the coming soon hits when, um, you've been, your trip's been assigned to a vehicle and it'll show up. And that means, hey, you know, you should be at your stop.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Counselor Selberg, and then I'll go to the phones.
Appreciate it. What are the hours for this, does, I didn't see it on here?
Yes, it's the same hours.
Okay.
Saturday service, yeah, so it's the same Saturday bus stop service area.
What are those hours again, I'm sorry?
So hours are on Saturdays, I believe, seven forty-five to six forty-five? We can get that in a second. That's where we should add somebody from Suri Metro here, but it is exactly the same times.
Okay. As far as marketing this new program, how are you doing that?
So, um, you know, we're going to do it by website, we'll have a website up here by tomorrow. Um, we're going to do those, those flyers that we are showing you. Uh, we're going to do, uh, bus depot announcements for the people that are, that are actually riding the bus. Uh, we have, uh, right now, a, a text service, um, that people can utilize. And our, I think we have about a hundred and twenty-five people, um, that are utilizing that text service. So it's usually, it's been used for, um, detours and if they go on snow routes, they'll text something out to anybody that's subscribing to that. Same thing here, we'll, we'll be sending something out saying, starting Saturdays, you need to schedule your ride. And here's how you do that, go to this website.
Okay.
Um, you know, certainly we're going to do news releases, um, you know, uh, I, I know, I think I probably going to be talking to some news media, maybe even right after this. Um, you know, certainly we're going to try to do whatever we can to get the word out. Uh, talking to organizations that utilize it quite often. Um, I know I've reached out to people like Lucy's Social Services, Multicultural Center, getting the word out to people that, uh, might have ESL needs too.
Sounds good, well, congratulations, it looks pretty exciting, look forward to seeing how it all, uh, how it all comes out. So it starts on, uh, in a couple of weeks, the nineteenth?
December nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay, great, thank you.
Let's go to the phones, any questions on the phones?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Kylie, please.
Um, one of the advantages of doing a pilot on Saturdays, uh, is we're picking a day where we currently have service. And so you compare, you can then compare apples to apples, the results of the pilot with what kind of, uh, ridership did we have previously uh, on Saturday. So that's, that's, uh, important in, in this pilot project. Uh, if we expanded the Sunday, we wouldn't really have the history to, um, and the data to compare it with, so. Um, Sam, could you address the potential this has for expanding service areas?
Yeah, you know, uh, I think it, it, it depends on, on, on the pilot, of course. But again, it kind of goes back to how many vehicles are we needing to draw from? If we're using all eight of those vehicles and the same number of riders, it's going to be tough to see that we can start to look at additional service area or service hours. But if, if, if we're able to see, you know, that we're able to utilize less buses, then, you know, that's where we really do have something. So it kind of boils down to something that's simple.
Right, yeah, I, I understand that. And I do believe we're at a point where we need to try something different, uh, because our ridership just isn't there. This does, uh, offer convenience that is lacking in our current system. And, you know, one of the big return on investments is if we could realize the same increase in ridership that some of the other communities, where one of them had over four hundred percent increase in ridership, that's a huge return, uh, in investment. And that's where we can start looking at, uh, improving service to the, the periphery of the city. The, the northeast, the southeast, uh, the northwest and southwest are underserved as it is now. And obviously, that then impacts the individuals that rely on paratransit too. Uh, so it's important, if we could expand that service area based on success of, of this, uh, it, it would serve, it would serve everybody involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Counselor Saylor Brecky?
Not hearing anything from them. I, I jotted a number of notes, so I'm going to try to jump around to them. So, uh, first I have to say, this is for me, one of the most exciting presentations I've seen in quite a long time. Because this is something that I, everybody has wanted to make, you know, move the needle on this issue. And so this has a potential to maybe be a game changer, so I'm optimistic and, and hope to see what happens. So congratulations and thanks for the work. So, something that was kind of a, a neat revelation here is that you, you mentioned it's not an, it doesn't necessarily have to be an all or none. Because I think that's been kind of the hang up sometimes, is that this thought that we, you know, you quote unquote would throw out the fixed route system and go to a completely different model. This is something where you could maintain. Like I said, if it's a high performing route, it may be work better just to do the fixed route. But there might be some that, on the periphery, or even certain routes at certain hours, maybe, or days, maybe it works better as a fixed route. But in certain days, maybe it works better as, as going to a, this other model. So that's an exciting thing, and maybe, maybe the answer ends up being a hybrid. It was mentioned about expen- expanding the service area. I just wrote down that, you know, big wins that could come from this are kind of the, uh, the things that I remember hearing when we were doing, kind of those free thinking when I was part of those. You guys remember when they, they were doing the, the core team? Uh, things that kept coming up was expand the service area, add hours and add what, a Sunday, I believe it was. I mean, that was, that was like what people keep asking for. And like I said, if you can do with a little, a less amount of buses, maybe all of those are possible, or any of those are possible. So when you go to, and I think Shawna hit on this a little bit when she explained how it works. Um, so it does sound like it's much like doing a, a ride share like a Lyft or an Uber where, when I do it on the app, somebody pulls up and they go, hey, are you Greg? And then, yeah, and then you get in and that's what it was. Because I was going to ask the question, I, I could imagine somebody could almost show up at a, be standing at a fixed route without doing a booking, thinking that, you know, I'm just going to get on the bus. And then so, h- how would that be addressed, you know?
And I, I can answer that too, it's a good point. Um, one thing that this allows, that the, uh, whole system allows for is what we call ad hoc rides. So if somebody was at that bus stop, and this is going to happen, um, as, as Pantonium says, it's going to happen a fair amount. You go to a Walmart, you drop off people, it tends to be a high, a high location for, for other people to maybe get on. And then somebody maybe didn't schedule a ride, but they see the bus there, they walk up, the driver can schedule the ride for them right on the bus.
Good, that, that, because I figured that, that's going to happen and what do you do there? And then you don't, you're not turning them away, so they can on the fly, where do you want to go, they punch it in and it's just a ride?
And, and it's really pretty simple too, because they don't have to do the, you know, from, they're already there.
Oh yeah, they're already, yeah, yeah.
All they have to do is punch in the to and it's ASAP, so they're just pump, punching in, I'm going here to this stop and they get on. Now, it could take them a little longer potentially, so that's why we encourage people to schedule rides, but it will be accommodated, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's great to hear. Um, so, when, when, and I'm sure this is all technology that can be added or they may add it in the future. It, Counselor Starr made a reference to it, so it shows like an estimated time. It does, it's not at the point where you can literally look at your phone and you can see the bus coming to you, like you see like a GPS. Because that would have to be on the buses, of course, but.
They, um, they, they're not, they can follow it, um, and I, I don't remember Shawna, if they can follow it on the, the phone. I don't, I, it's just going to say, you know, the ride is coming. It's coming soon and it'll be with, within the next fifteen minutes is, is kind of the, the time period that we're going with, starting out with. So, um, but we can follow that, um, you know, in-house, you know, we can actually know where the buses are at.
I suppose this wouldn't be part of the pilot because it would require the infrastructure such as GPS systems on the buses and all that stuff. But that would be a wonderful thing to look at, if, I, I remember using, I think it was Via, when I used that in Texas. That was one of the things, you could literally see the bus as it was coming and you knew it, or the micro, the little thing when it showed up. And that leads me to another question, on Via, so you booked a ride, but it wasn't a given that it was just going to be you getting on the bus, going from A to B. When they pulled up, somebody else might be on the bus already and they be, maybe headed for another destination. So like when, when the bus pulled up to us, we got on, but somebody else was on, and they took them to their destination, dropped them off, and then we went a little farther and we got off. Is, does it work the same sort of way, is the algorithm smart enough to do that sort of thing?
Right, that's exactly what it's, it's doing. It's, it's trying to pull the rides together that are the closest together and trying to do that, you know, the most efficient way possible. So it is still a shared ride system exactly, it's, when you get on, you're, you're likely, if there's somebody else on the bus, you're going to, you know, go to maybe not a, a, a direct route to your location, you're going to go to their stop and then go on to yours.
Okay, so it's, it's very much similar with that. Okay, so like with the ambulance service, they have stations, um, posts where they will sit around town so that, you know, the response time is, is the highest. In the case of on-demand, do, do they return to the depot every time? Or wh- where do they go after they've completed a ride if they have no booking waiting?
So if, 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 in the point in time, there actually is, um, and we've done a little bit of training, if there's no rides left, it'll just say, you know, wait for, for, stand, yeah, it's a standby. And what we'll do then is they'll, they'll stand by at a place that's, it's safe for them to stand by. They don't want to stand by in the middle of Minnesota Avenue or something, but they'll, they'll go off to potentially the depot if it's close by, Southwest Transfer Facility if it's close by, um, and then wait for the next ride. Um, but typically, um, if there's no rides that they have to start, even start the day, they would just, um, we're, we're going to locate them, either keep them at the garage or start them at the depot. And so we'll, we'll kind of, you know, look at that as, as, as what works best, that's part of what we're investigating.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, like, when I was at Metro Communications and saw how that works, it's, you know, they, they're essentially telling them what post to go to. So they're always making sure that they have the ambulances, because the ambulances are always moving. So if somebody's already posted at post four, then they send them over to post five so that, I mean, and, and have you identified, like, these are the fixed places of which we've authorized that you can park the bus? Are they just going to pull into just a, you, do you know what I mean, I mean?
Right, um, we've talked about it and that's something we'll be talking more about. I would anticipate most of the time, if they're going to dwell for a, even a significant period of time, it's going to be Southwest Transfer, the depot and the garage. Um, if there's some other places that are, you know, that we're going to locate, um, and need to, then we'll identify those places too. But for the most part, what Pantonium is tell, telling us, if, you know, they're out there, they're going to keep getting rides.
Okay, they're, for the most part, won't be lots of, I mean, because I can tell you that doing ambulance ride-alongs, you can sit there for three hours and not have a call, it happens.
Well, here, here, what they're doing is they're not, they're not saying to the, the bus fleet, the eight buses, we're going to give you one, you one, you one, you know, everybody gets one, everybody's fair. No, it's the opposite a little bit. It's, we're going to be more efficient, we're going to give this bus eight, this bus five, this bus six.
Mm-hmm.
Then the rest of them might not have very many at all. So it really wants to, to, to utilize the capacity of those buses to be more efficient.
Yeah, yeah, I just bring it up because the, you know, the, the smart algorithms are, because one of the things for people is going to be the amount of time it takes for the bus to get to you. And so if it's smart enough that it would keep, kind of keep them spread around town so that there's always a bus near me and it doesn't end up where you have four buses clustered on the west side sitting there, and then there's a call from the east side. So just, uh, something to, something to, to look into and, and obviously, yeah, please.
The app allows you to pick your arrival time or your pickup time. So say I have a doctor's appointment at ten o'clock and it's important that I'm there at ten. I don't care what time I get picked up, I need to be there by ten. So you have that option, so you can do, like, based on your arrival time or your pickup time.
Very good, so you could, if you book it ahead of time knowing that, then the bus is hopefully going to probably roll up when you need it. So, okay, perfect. Um, you talked about booking a ride without a phone, or with, without a, a smartphone, we're going to have the dial-in number, so that's, that's good. And we're talking about potentially expanding service areas, that could happen in the past. Um, just looking to see if I had anything else. Yeah, I, I think that's everything I had, this is, this is very exciting and I'm looking forward to, uh, trying it myself. So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll be a pilot for you.
In the App Store.
Yep, and I.
You're out there now.
And I did download the app on my Android and I put in the three, you know, the.
Sam?
Sam, and it, it accepted it, so I'm assuming I can't book a ride yet, but it worked.
Oh yeah, you could.
Oh, really?
On a Saturday, on Saturday the nineteenth, uh, any Saturday out until April. Just make sure that you're going to be there because we don't want you to be a no-show.
Yeah, okay, oh, the other thing I was going to mention that's great about this is, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is that you don't have analytics right now. You don't know who's getting on where, who's getting off where, you don't know how many unique riders you have. With a system like this, now you know how many unique riders you have, where they're getting on, where they're getting off. So you start to learn about what are the po- popular destinations, which ones are barely being used, what time of days are they being used? And so that could maybe even drive some of your decisions about fixed routes and making a smarter, more efficient system, so.
We'll have all that information for the pilot, you know, it'll all be, you know, where, where were those locations that people were riding to and from? And, um, yeah, so we're excited to get that information, help us with this.
Okay.
Great, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, Counselor Erickson.
One thing that you, you said sparked a question is, is, you know, if I do a ride share and it's a no-show, I'm charged five bucks for ordering and wasting somebody's time. So if I order a bus to come to my house and take me downtown or to breakfast, wherever, work, how does that work if I decide to not come out of my house and the bus is sitting outside of it? It's a buck fifty, but it's that time that was wasted. How long do they sit and wait for you? And what happens if I, I mean, you could have people messing with the system. I mean, I joke about it back in the day before, they had caller ID and all of that, people used order pizza and send it to other people's houses and not pay for it, you know? And pizza would show up at their houses, silly example, but, you know, what if?
Right, so, um, remember to book that ride, uh, you need an email. Um, so we do have a little bit of identity there, I mean, not much, but, um, what we're, we have to base, we have to see how it goes.
Right.
We will have a policy for no-shows. What the software is telling, company is telling us, more likely, it will be the passengers complaining that the bus wasn't there and they were. But it has the capability of telling both, uh, GPS-wise and timestamp-wise where that bus was and when. So we can go back in the record and say, no, the bus was there, um, they waited for you for the five minutes, you were a no-show. Um, sorry, but, you know, here it is and, uh, the driver was there, so I'm sorry. Um, but we will, I mean, there is a way that you can expel a rider from the system if they are abusive in that way. Um, we don't anticipate that being a problem, but we have a contingency for it.
Right.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, please.
Just, just a couple, um, I was a, a member of the selection team for the on-demand transit software and, uh, I dug up some of my notes regarding Pantonium. Um, and again, uh, want to stress, as Sam has already done, uh, they, uh, that this is a, a macro transit system, not, not a micro transit. system, not, not a micro transit. Um, one advantage that they promoted is high, high volume service, um, is likely to lead to, uh, keeping your fares low or, or maybe even lowering them. Uh, again, the wait times, uh, go down, the ride times will go down and miles traveled to destination will go down, which all equals, uh, to increased convenience, um, for the rider. Um, one of the other things that I noted, geofencing for door-to-door service is possible by area too. Um, so this would lend itself to even some para-transit possibilities. And, um, and again, the app is just, is, is very versatile as Shawna had explained. Um, and there was, we, we were very excited and, uh, to move forward and it was some time ago that we had that excitement to, to move ahead. Uh, and then of co- of course, we were impacted just like everybody else with COVID-19. And so we were doing Zoom meetings for the presentations. We had, uh, one team in Paris, another team in New York, individual who lived in Canada but was stuck in Mexico because the flights had stopped. So it was kind of a challenge to just go through the presentations. And, uh, then, um, with COVID, it wasn't the time to do a pilot when your ridership is already gonna be down and you had other issues just with staffing buses. So, um, good reasons for the delay, uh, but it's exciting to finally be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I guess I'll just finish, uh, with a couple of things I thought of. It, we almost kind of glossed over the no-transfer thing, but I think that's kind of a big deal. You know, not having to do a transfer. I mean, you have the time savings. There's obviously some rider confusion that can go with transfers. And so not having to do transfers, I think is a, is a big deal. Um, and then the other thing is of, of course, we all have to remember, and myself included, I'm asking you all of these questions about how are we gonna do this and that? It's a pilot. So there's, the, the whole point is we're gonna learn. And, and if we decide to move forward, that's when we would be talking about a lot of other intricate things such as can you put payments on there? Cause Counselor Starr mentioned that and I think that'd be great, you know, if you'd be able to pay by your phone as well. But that's something that would come probably with time. So anyway, thank you very much. Look forward to it. Let's all give it a try. Thanks. Our next presentation is going to be the 2021 Legislative Priorities. That's going to be presented by Jim David, our Chief of Legislation and Policy. Uh, first, we're going to start with Counselor Erickson is going to open it up and then Jim's gonna take over.
Thank you. And, um, we met this morning and I don't wanna steal Jim's thunder cause I know he will give, um, a great presentation. Um, just wanted to give just a little bit of background like I've done the last several years. Um, we started this ad hoc committee six years ago. It's, um, has four counselors on it. And really, we started this process meeting with, um, the other counties as well as the surrounding cities. And we've enjoyed some great success in really collaborating together and impacting some change. Some of the things really didn't impact Sioux Falls, but we wanted to rally around our neighboring communities. Um, and they rally around us as well when those changes happen. Uh, when we met, it was virtual today. Uh, due to COVID, we decided instead of serving a breakfast and having everyone, uh, pile in the overflow room, we wanted to do it in a safe manner. And so we chose to do it on WebEx this time. And we had a little over 20 people, uh, with many different legislators from seasoned legislators to brand-new legislators. And so it was exciting to, um, see the turnout for that as well as some follow-up afterwards of people saying, sorry, they couldn't make it. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Jim. Uh, he and David Bixler, um, were in attendance this morning, uh, as well as everybody else on the line. But again, thank you to Jim for really leading this up, making sure everyone is aware of when we're meeting and that, getting the legislators, um, on the line and having those collaborative, uh, relationships with them. So thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just gonna switch things up a little bit, uh, following Counselor Erickson's remarks. I think one of the points I wanna bring up, and I didn't think of it till this afternoon, but realizing that there is this coalition, that there is these group of, there's these communities, it's Minnehaha County, and you have nine legislative districts. You have 25% of the Senate, 25% of the House. And I think after the 2020 census, we'll see that number even expand and that influence even expand, uh, even further. And so it was a great opportunity to meet, uh, with these legislators, to meet with local elected leaders from Brandon, from Harrisburg, Del Rapids and Minnehaha County. And so I, I'd like to thank Counselor Erickson, Counselor Breckie and Counselor Selberg and, uh, uh, Mr. Bixler who were able to participate in our meeting this morning. Uh, well, what we listed or what we, what we shared was a list of, of 10 priorities, uh, some of which don't necessarily involve the city directly, but instead provide an opportunity for the cities and the county to be seen as working together for the betterment of their citizens, many of whom overlap, especially in Minnehaha County. If we look at just item two and item four on the slide, you'll see that item two touches on what counties have to face is more than one legal publication and they are requesting one. Item four is requesting a bed, booze and board tax, uh, for the county to pay for law enforcement expenses. And then number seven provides that opportunity, uh, for the city and county to show legislative leaders that collaboration that already exists. And that the, the local leaders are looking not only, uh, for the, uh, for that taxpayer dime, but, but joining together on opportunities such as when it comes to libraries, law enforcement, the triage center, Metro 911, and there's probably, and there is many, many others. Now, if we go to items three, five and 14, these are more general statements that raise issues such as workforce housing, the benefits of tax, tax increment financing and triage centers. These also provide direction for the South Dakota Municipal League who was also in attendance this morning. Whenever a bill is considered and it fits into these categories. One example, when you look into workforce housing is that there was a bill that provide, that expanded tax increment financing for affordable housing. And the municipal league was able to support that initiative, uh, that was passed by the legislature. The next slide illustrates more specific suppo- more specific proposals, such as support for alternative legal publication options, funding for mental health, drug, alcohol, abuse, double taxation of government projects, funding for the Emerald Ashford mitigation and reconstructing Slip-Up Creek. And I think some of the news that we heard this morning from Senator Stalzer and Senator-elect Zickman was that it looks like there is going to be $3 million in the, the governor's budget, uh, that will be announced, uh, in a short time, uh, to finish this road. Right now, if you go up Jim Zee, Jim Zee Highway and rent a road, that little, um, that little, I guess it'd be a J, uh, right now, most of it is gravel. And so the plan is to build that to state specs and you'll have a continuous concrete, uh, road, or I believe it'll be a, uh, maybe be an asphalt road between those two, uh, those two roads there. And I think the importance of that is not only just because the cemetery, there's gonna be additional traffic because there is a wedding barn out there that's planned. Within your provisional resolution, we have also some additional items that include eliminating pre- resumptive probation, protecting the Big Sioux River and its tributaries. And then support for diversity within the state and pollinator-friendly plantings and state-owned right-of-way. A new item that was requested by finance would increase the bid limit for supplies and services to $50,000. For your consideration, one item that I would ask for you to consider as we look at these priorities is starting to maybe reduce them, maybe place some additional emphasis on some of these other items. But this was an item, uh, that currently says that the, that the council supports state funding for human service agency transportation to offset the cost to local, public and nonprofit transportation systems. Uh, in the past, the Human Services Secretary had met with some of us, uh, some of the council members, and they said that they had little interest in review, revisiting the funding algor- algorithm for agency transportation. And I think even the city of Sioux Falls itself has not raised para-transit, uh, to the crisis level that it has in the past. And so just for your consideration, if there is a consensus, we, we could remove that item. If not, we can continue to have it on, uh, your resolution. And then I'll just close with adding in the calendar here, uh, the budget, the, the governor's budget address is December 8, 2021 at, I believe, 1 o'clock. The session opens on January 12th and on that same day, we have the, the State of the State address. Uh, happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna add some extra dialogue in the conversation. Um, Counselor Breckie or, uh, Counselor Selberg, feel free to chime in. Part of the, um, dialogue throughout the priorities is what is really truly the most exciting, in my opinion, not to diminish any of this, but just to learn more information of things that happened last year and some of those proposals coming forward this year. And one of those is, uh, number 11, when we talked about, um, the, oh, I don't know if it's 11. I'm sorry. I have my one from this morning, the triage. I'll just use the general terms. The triage, as we talked about triage, um, last year, Senator Solholt did have some barriers, regulatory barriers removed and also asked for one-time funding for $400,000. $200,000 was given for that, uh, triage center. Um, you'll see, we know we have a presser this week with some exciting announcements as well, but that $200,000, uh, according to Senator Kolbeck, who is on appropriation, said that that would be carried forward. Um, doesn't mean it's gonna make the budget, doesn't mean that it's gonna be making it to the end, but it is up for consideration, which is good because it's always good to get it early versus trying to amend it in later. And so that's, um, an exciting time. Um, Senator Stal- or Senator Stalzer and Zigman also touched on the, um, state veterans cemetery. Um, Zigman talked about having $3 million raised by 2023 and opening in spring of 2021. They've raised about $750,000 at this point. It's strictly for maintenance, um, not for the infrastructure of the roads. Um, as they talked, um, there is one-time funds that have been submitted to appropriations, uh, to address this road. And so I think it's important for us to stay involved. Um, Counselor Kylie was heavily involved in making sure this was to the finish line with, um, Jim David. And so I think that's something that we should, um, keep our eye on. The last thing that I will touch on is, um, Senator Kolbeck did discuss the CARES Act funding. We all got an email from Director Pritchard today. I did forward that on to Senator Kolbeck, who was going to share that with their appropriations. They're very interested in how we are spending the CARES Act money, um, making sure it is submitted appropriately and not used to have any consequences for us should we spend it not the right way. And so, um, that email that we got today was really well detailed and, um, the senator was very appreciative of having that, uh, sent over from Director Pritchard. So, um, more to consider and think about as there's more CARES Act money coming in and we just don't know what's gonna happen with that. But I just wanted to, um, really just touch on those couple of items. Um, it actually was a really fast, efficient meeting and we got done 12 minutes early. So always gotta like that when you get done faster. So that's all I got. I would, I would chime in that I would support removing that, uh, human service agency as we're trying new technology and trying to see, uh, how we can really change the landscape of transportation and maybe offsetting some of the expenses ourselves here locally. It's hard to look at the state every time. Uh, you know that everybody being on appropriations, Counselor, that everybody comes forward with their hand out. And so, um, if we can be innovative with transportation, uh, and not have, uh, asking for additional funds for that this year, it certainly puts a higher impact on some of those other things. And so giving it a try with the on-demand, I think is important.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, just add a little bit into that with, with everything in flux right now with transportation and the pilot program, for us to be asking money and then if somebody said, well, okay, what can we do for you? And then we're like, well, we're kind of looking at some pilot programs. And so it, it may give a mixed message. Just because it's removed this year does not, does not mean it cannot be added in subsequent years. And so that's just another part of this conversation.
Be, be, thank you. Before I move on, are you looking at least for some direction today regarding that item?
If there's opposition, I'll keep it in there and it could be removed by amendment. But if there is a consensus and opposition, I'll just administratively remove it.
Okay. So I'm just gonna move on to anybody else and anybody who has any questions or comments or any feedback on that particular, uh, proposal.
Counselor Neitzert?
Yes, Counselor Breckie.
I would just add my, uh, my two cents worth to what the other two people who attended the meeting said. I agree with what Jim is suggesting there. It sends a mixed message and there's nothing that prevents us from, you know, reprioritizing it and, and restating it at a different time if we really feel that that's something we need from the state. But because of what we're doing right now, it just makes perfect sense for me to just pull that off and it does, it just, it refocuses, you know, direction and, and other areas where we really are focused right now. And then, um, you know, again, if we need to, you know, recreate it or reinvent it at another time, I think that's up possible. But I think while we're engaging in the transit programming, you know, there may be solutions that, that we could at least reduce, you know, some of that, that cost that way. So I would just throw my support. And I think it would be nice if we could just give him that consent today so he can just take it off.
Thank you. Others on the phone? Not hearing any. I, I would have no objection. I do remember in the conversation with the state, as I, you can help if I forget. I, I believe they have a formula and one of the things in the formula happens, so they're, they're calculating a number of things. And one of the things happens to be transportation. So I think their position is, is that the agencies are actually receiving money for transportation, although they don't necessarily say you have to use X amount of dollars for this and X amount of dollars for food and all this. And, and so it's really up to the agency to allocate the money however they, they wish to allocate the funding that they get to serve their clients. And I, I think historically, we have provided the trips, so therefore the agency hasn't necessarily allocated the dollars. And so it's really not necessarily that the state isn't providing the funding. It's just that the agencies have kind of built their budgets in such a way that they don't, they don't necessarily have the money allocated for it. So it's really something that we'd have to have a discussion with the agencies about how they can, i- if we were to go that route, how they would move money around. And that's been a long-term discussion. So I, is that a fair?
They're nonprofits and money is tight.
Yeah, yeah. It's not easy for them to find it. But as I recall, this, the state's position is they have a formula, they're already providing money for transportation. And so that's where kind of the-
Yeah, it was a very detailed algorithm, uh, that, yeah, this formula that they did not wanna mess with. And I think there was a lot of compromise and it took a lot of work to get to this algorithm. And they don't wanna reopen, uh, this algorithm. So.
Sure. Well, I-
My memory of that conversation.
It sounds like you're hearing consensus, no objections. So I, I think you can move forward. Okay. Uh, I'm not, I don't think I'm hearing anything else. Um, thank you very much. Next up, I, is public comment. Anybody would like to speak up to, for up to five minutes on anything on the agenda? I don't see anybody that isn't city staff. So I'm going to look for a motion.
Counselor, I'll make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 parent four.
A motion by Erickson, count, uh, seconded by Counselor Selberg to move into executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Council members, Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. So we're gonna move into executive session. We need to clear the chambers. Thank you very much.